Meeting called, order. Your role call.
Doctor Robinson here, Mr. West.
Here.
Doctor Bunch here, who is where?
Here.
Mr. Dow.
Yeah, everybody is present. Okay, we will have a prayer.
Well, this is Pastor Lamar Briggs. Uh, he is pastor at First Roxy.
Roxy.
Roxy first Baptist, Roxy.
Oh, it's Roxy, okay.
He is also a teacher out in that just early college when he teaches U.S. history. So he will, uh, deliver the opening prayer for us today. Thank you, Mr. Briggs.
Thank you all for having me. Let us all pray. Father, we thank you for your grace and your mercy, Lord God. We thank you for your son, Jesus, the death, the burial, and the resurrection. We ask, Lord God, your blessing upon this school board and this school board meeting. Lord God, upon this district as a whole. Lord God, we pray that you give us all a spirit of excellence and that you be glorified through that which is done. Father, we just honor and praise you. But you have your way. Order ourselves to speak to our hearts. Give us insight, what we need insight. Directors and orders, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Had I known that we had a ministry in here, because Tony's been pretending to be a minister. We got right there.
I saw it. He can hoop with the best of them. Little bit of comment, is that any? I don't think it's any.
No, no comment.
Redemission and presentations, uh, Mr. Field.
We have to adopt the agenda.
Oh, adopt the agenda.
How many did we adopt the agenda? They can ask for them.
Moving seven all in favor. That's five zero.
Mister James, members of the board, it's a great day to be a bulldog. And as always, we are excited about recognizing, uh, our own. So at this time, let's make all three, we will assume position. My entire department will come forward.
That's alright. Big department.
They must be on version.
Natchez Allen School District Honors. Congratulations on meeting your student achievement goals for term one. Uh, through your dedication, preparation, and delivery of instruction, great things are happening for your students. Thank you for all you do for your school and the Natchez Allen School District. Signed today by our interim superintendent, Ms. Andrew McDonald Green. This time, we would like to recognize, uh, Lamar Briggs of Natchez Early College, U.S. History. Students met first term goal.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. We appreciate your attention to detail and your, uh, pursuit of excellence for our students. Oh, yes, look at that.
Lacy James, Natchez Early College, U.S. History.
Thank you, Mr. James. We appreciate you for your hard work.
DeAdriana Jackson, Natchez Early College, Math. And she has some of the best cheesecake you ever made in your life.
She does not play about those numbers either.
She does not.
Thank you, Mr. James.
And also recognizing, uh, in their absence, uh, Latoya Fleming, Natchez Early College, English Language Arts. Doctor Erica Brown Tanner, Natchez Early College, English Language Arts. And Jane, Janine Ryan, Natchez Early College Biology. And... We want to treat you all to dinner.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, a dinner to dinner. All that's gonna get for you. That's dinner. If you want a drink, see... You want a drink, see Mr. West.
How much is it?
Mr. West, they looking for drinks. Perhaps it'll, perhaps it'll get the appetite.
I, I just want to know if you gave him about the right amount of money, amount of money, because I saw you cashing in on some something.
Uh, you want how much it is?
Yeah.
It's thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty.
I knew it was sixty.
So again, thank you so much to the Natchez Allen Early College staff. Uh, you really do great work and awesome work, and I know that you continue to do so. We appreciate, uh, uh, the excellence that you all demonstrate in the class and the excellence that you require of our students. Especially the McDonald tribe. Thank you. Especially those who teach us.
Tyler, Tyler's still a student right now.
Oh, he is?
Tyler's still right now.
Awesome, awesome. And that's my baby. She says my son Tyler is one of her top students now.
That's good news.
How much is it?
She'll get right back.
Okay, item number six, approval minutes, approval November... You got some more?
Yes. May not be on your agenda, but, um, Mrs. uh, Jareeta Fraser King is here with Mrs. Betty Bell. Uh, they're here to make a presentation regarding, uh, the Fraser property. Um, Miss King represents Southwest Mississippi Wellness Association. Miss Bell represents Pretty Girls With Brains.
Well, good evening board and superintendent McDonald. Thank you for having us today. Um, myself, uh, behalf of Chocolate Buzz Association of Mississippi and Mrs. Betty Bell, Pretty Girls With Brains of Mississippi. And, uh, we were, we are coming back to you once again, uh, to talk to you about the program that we were trying to, um, start. And we would like to have a space donated. We always say that if you train a child the way they should go, then they don't get the, want to part from it. And so that's what we were trying to do, is we're trying to create workforce here in our community, with the new chapter that we have right here in our community. And so I'll, we'll tell you something about the program that we will be offering in the space.
Hello again. How much is this brief as possible? We are looking for a donated space so that we can invite community to community and to house various programs for people who have been displaced out of work. Young people and anyone else who need to find themselves a space to help this community grow economically. Some of the programs that we currently want to do has a connection between the school district, the community, and the state at large. One of the programs that we've already been accepted or someone has agreed to come to is our C D L program. And we have someone who's wanting to come in and who wants to do cap rate and show us how to set up a cap rate in school. So there are so many things that people are saying that they want to do to help until we just feel like a space will give us that opportunity to do so. So the bottom line is that if you partnership, you can do many, many, many things. If you isolate yourself, there's nothing that you couldn't, but you have to partner with people. We just wrote a grant. We don't know if we're gonna get it. It's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And of that money, we, uh, will be able to pay for fifty people to go to school on us and to receive a seven hundred dollar stipend if they finish the program. And medical system, emergency technology, and cybersecurity. So those are the things that we're trying to focus on and we ask for God to, to grant us those resources. And if that happens, it would be okay. If you don't donate us the building, we'll be able to pay for the insurance and the upkeep. We've already acquired, uh, the building, so we work.
Are you talking about the entire building or a portion of the building?
Uh...
Okay, well, let me ask you this. You know that it's a, it's a voting precinct?
Yes, sir.
You also aware of the fact that we, there are some further down the road, we just don't know. There may be some space that we may need to use, uh, for kids or whatever the case may be.
Yes, sir.
Would you all be okay with, uh, with, uh...
Yes, sir.
A lease agreement that would enable those kinds of things to take place?
That should be an open invitation in the agreement is that you all have access to the space whenever you get ready for children. Because my component of working has to do strictly with how I can engage young people. Uh, I spoke with the superintendent earlier, Ms. McDonald, and I said, okay, I am working on a program where we suspend students from Natchez Allen School District. Suspend. They don't have anywhere to go. I want to work with those students to give them community service and tutorial services. And you'll be able to keep up with your classes so that if you do come back to school, do not let them fall behind.
Yeah.
And also young children, the elementary kids as well, they need to have a, a space to go with them. We can't control those kids because behavior is a, a number one determinant. For teachers not being able to have effective classroom management and instructional techniques.
Is there a maximum age limit for the kids you're talking about?
No.
So it could be young adults too?
Yeah, right. Ageed up to... Take it away.
Oh, but it's, it's gotta be through twelve, not beyond it.
We have a different program for that. We have our G E D program.
Okay, alright, that's what I was...
Uh, yeah, let me say that. Uh, the program that we're trying to get off the ground, the G E D program would be offered by Penn State, uh, to get their information, uh, we get their certificate from, from them. We just buy... Penn Posture to get the information from us to help them along the way so that they can reach their goal.
And a few of those other programs also will be, uh, positively, uh, trained as well to fulfill some of the workforce needs that are critical around this area. So we will offer that as well to people. Service aid certified as well too. So there is endless possibilities and programming that we can do right here in Natchez, if you are provided a space to function.
And what grant did you, what, what's the funding source for the grant?
Delta Regional Authority, uh, it's a workforce grant. And it's always being submitted.
Okay.
It's just submitted. Uh, we have acquired partnerships with Amherst State University. First program to do, uh, workshops to help further people who wanted to see a program. So we have to, uh, explore more options for them to go further in their nursing careers. And so if they are applying more to the C N A program, we would help to pay for some of those fees. And we're also partnering with God sent, uh, healthcare services. She will also agree to interview and possibly hire some of those folks.
Will, will, you need something formal from the board prior to, uh, are we, what, what's your time, Frank, for needing something from the board in response to...
Uh, we would love to have an immediate response because if they sub, if they grant us the, the grant, then we need to say, we have to build it.
Okay.
But you, you, do you need it to apply?
No, no, we do not.
And so I brought placed it on the agenda as a presentation today and not a board approval. I, because I know that there are some, we have to restore the campus. And so we have not finalized that, and so we'll bring that back to the board in January. That's the discretion of the board.
Okay, and together with...
It will, it will be a lease agreement, like you go with, uh, the management department.
Together with something addressed from your turn and based on...
Yes, sir.
Those things.
Yes, sir.
And upon approval, um, signs is going to sponsor some of the repairs, so, um, the paint and...
Who is it?
Signs, we asked everything with support community programs, so... Take that back and everything. Because I know there was some windows, uh, missing and we need to paint other cosmetic things.
Oh, that's great.
So, it makes, so you all need, y'all have everything now to go...
To go forward, uh...
By us having this meeting?
By, well, a verbal agreement is always good, but a written agreement is something else. That's so crazy, that.
But I, I, I think it's pretty clear that you can say, if, if the, it's a grant, I mean, if the funding source says to you, we need, you need something from us. We can certainly send a letter, right?
So who provides it? I provided to them yesterday a letter of support.
Support.
To say that the district is interested in partnering.
That's all the grant.
That's all they need, right?
The grant, it, just a support letter that we're, we're, we're all board, yeah.
And we're not dependent solely on, on the grant for the building because we have other avenues of, of, to make sure that we sustain it.
And I just want to say that, uh, uh, Jareeta and, and Betty Bell, they are community minded people and has always been. Jareeta works tirelessly trying to, uh, elevate avenues. And Miss Bell is a heck of a great writer. So I know that this will, uh, be something, this, again, you claim that it's the...
Their names always seem alive.
So I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for this vision and thank you. And if you want to, thank you, thank. If you want to look for more information, uh, the, uh, Ms. Willie Jones, tell them about her company. She has a workforce center in Jackson. She has a truck driving, uh, company already, and she's ready to, uh, set up.
That is true. And if y'all teaching that, because I promise you, I heard the thing talking, talking like in sentences. It's gonna be a great thing.
You know, exceptional. And when I attended you all meeting and that you all had economic development, ink on board and other, you know, I think it's gonna be a great, uh, venue.
Thank you all. Thank you board for...
Along with this, uh, brother is, uh, the N S O federal programs upon, uh, injunction.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Mrs. McDonald Green, and, uh, directors, and Doctor Cook. Our department was contacted last week about a donation. Well, adults always come in. Adults are normally extremely willing to make a donation. But I was simply just thrown off my feet when two, not just any teenagers, two beautiful, fluent teenagers came into the office with a smile and the best, uh, disposition ever. So they donated. Pretty girls with brains. I love it. And they are exemplary of that. Pretty girls with brains. Came into the federal programs office and donated coats for children in need. And I said to Peyton Bell, I said, oh, this, I was just, just totally thrilled. We were. So, and I told her, we have got to recognize you because when you are doing things in the community to make a difference, it is incumbent upon us as adults to recognize them. So Mrs. McDonald Green and board, thank you for allowing us to recognize, uh, Peyton Bell, her grandmother, uh, Mrs. Betty Bell, who is their sponsor, and who's your friend?
Joy Wild. Joy Wild.
Joy Wild.
Zoe Wild.
Zoe Wild. Okay, thank you very much. And my friend, also superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
Alright. Okay, approval minutes. Approval of November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes, and approval December fourteen, twenty twenty-three, special call minutes.
I know they will approve six point one and six point two. Second.
Moving seven all in favor. That's five zero. Number seven, approval of consent item. Everything consent item that we, we talked about with Matt.
I still move the, the consent item, seven point one, seven point two, and seven point three.
Seven point four.
Seven point four.
Give us something added. Moving seven all in favor. Okay, approval, alright. Item eight, eight point one. This two C, eight point one, eight point, get it to me.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Mrs. McDonald Green. On behalf of the interim superintendent, the Office of Human Resources is presenting the Personnel Board Report for Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. It is recommended that the superintendent, that the board trustees approve the documentation that you have for you. Are there any questions in regards to any other items that's included in this personnel board report?
Oh, no.
Sir. Keep them moving seven all in favor.
Thank you.
Eight point two, Mr. Bird.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Good afternoon.
Um, you have before you the item eight point two, which is the pool of the claim documents and the second of the financial reports. Within your binders are the claim documents folders dated November seventeenth and December first. Also, the November twenty-three financial report along with capital positive summary is on the report page. If there are any questions, it is recommended that the board trustees approve the documents and claim documents and assess with required financial reports.
Second.
It's been moving seven all in favor. That's five zero. Mr. Bird, write, write this down. Mr. Bird?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yeah, I'll do right now, I'll take them down.
Oh, yeah, write this down. Uh, we need a printout. The one that I think is Wes asked you for, um, how, where we at for the finances and where, you know, where he actually...
Quarter of the...
Quarter. It's gonna be in January. We, we, we were talking about, Ms. Mac had brought up, we need to do a board work session around the eighth of January, so we're gonna need that there.
These are the, the four, the eight of day.
And if you look at a budget status statement, that's in the report that you're writing, that Bearland's column tells you the proceeds that we get sealed to this form. We need a letter of appointment in January.
But you know, you want it with, you know, the number, I mean, with the chart.
Right, exactly.
You, you know what we're talking about. Like you did last, didn't you do it once?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Bar charts.
Yeah, bar chart.
Oh, bar chart.
Right. You, you, you need, it ain't, it ain't questions, so we'll give...
A lot of, what's spent and then...
What synergy has been expended up through this point, that kind of thing.
In hearing device.
Right.
Okay.
Basic information.
Okay, information. For, for the files. Okay, um, eight point three.
Mr. Bird?
He's gonna get his note together.
I was trying to, it's my brain. Well, good afternoon once more. Uh, item eight point three is the, is the approval of a transfer of sixteen section interests. The, uh, Mississippi code allows the board authority to transfer the annual interest in return to the general fund or general dues. I have listed in the middle of the pages in the background information and showing the interest, the annual interest transfers for the last two years. Can y'all see that? Is that showing up okay?
Just tell us.
Okay, well, for twenty twenty-two, the interest transfer was three hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. For twenty twenty-one, that amount was two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
What is it, this?
We've been, the transfer hasn't happened yet. We've been marking the Smith, she'll know it will soon happen in December. And so we are, we are seeking the approval of the transfer of those, the earnings when they come later this month from the sixteen section fund to the general fund.
I still move. We need some money?
Indeed.
It's gonna be on time, so we count that.
Sure.
Thank you.
You've been moving seven all in favor.
Thank y'all so much.
And then you can just give us a mail, we email.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you got it. Alright, eight point four.
Eight point four, Mr. James, members of the board, is approval of student travel. Um, eight point four A is approval of student travel for Fallon, Brea Technical Center, Ed Rising. Uh, student organization that's February twenty-first through twenty-third, that is overnight travel that is covered and required as, uh, board approval. We have out of state travel for the A J F O T C, so my role is to participate in, uh, training exercises. Uh, overnight travel for our junior beta and beta clubs to their, uh, annual conference in February. So it's recommended that the board approves these, uh, travel requests.
Oh.
Moving seven all in favor. That's five zero. Okay, eight point five.
Good afternoon, President James, members of the board.
Okay.
Mrs. McDonald. Action item eight point five is related to modular units M five and M seven located at Joseph L. Fraser Elementary School Campus, which has been requested by Mississippi Department of Corrections as donation from Madcor Industries, a nonprofit entity of the state. This donation, if approved, will be removed from N A S D's Fraser's fixed assets as a donation to M D O C. Uh, gives the interim superintendent's recommendation that the Natchez Allen School District Board of Trustees to approve removal of Fraser Elementary School modular units M five and M seven from N A S D's fixed assets and donate them to M D O C Madcor.
Well, I want to...
Any questions?
Yeah, I want to get some clarification. We're not talking about the trails.
One more will be on the backside of the, uh...
We're talking, one building is on the backside.
Yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, huh? No, it's what you talking about, the two buildings on...
Right, they said I wanted to get clarification on whether, whether we're talking about the trail or...
Somebody at that one.
Um, she said that there are modular buildings on the back of the school.
Right there on the side, correct, Mr. Ford?
Uh, just back of the east door.
The question is the location is, are these the two buildings that are on the backside where the fifth grade hall, uh, fifth grade classes were, what's it?
Uh, right behind the library. The two trails right behind the library, which is, uh, up to here from the playground.
Yeah, yeah. How, how many? How many? Hold on a minute.
These are singular modular units. We got some that are double modular, but these are single modular ones. These two are.
One belongs to the, to the health building.
They took them.
They took them.
They got them. Okay. And then you got two all the way back to the back by the cafeteria where we at back there.
Not those.
Not the one with the bathrooms in and stuff like that?
No.
I didn't see you.
They're all to the right.
Oh, I didn't see you.
And so what we have was have Mr. Ford and Mr. Larry Brown to go and to assess those buildings, determine whether or not is it something that we wanted to donate and it's been their determination that, you know, these are items that we donate to them.
So they are not usable at this particular point?
No, sir. There are some repairs that would be necessary to use them, yes.
Okay. And at that point, I would assume they would, they would be going to another, uh, facility, I guess. You know, that, so you could always transfer, uh, donate or whatever the case may be when it's going to another...
Well, it says they're going to be used for education and workforce development, yeah.
But, 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 okay, I don't have a problem with that, but didn't you say that somebody that want the other two?
Somebody was interested in the trailer, but I, evidently I think they looked at it and they got back, come back, so...
Well, why?
Yeah, do they want the other two? Alright, okay. Alright. Okay, can we get a sec? Moving seven all in favor. They don't need the sides and all the trash in their league, because it's gonna fall deep. Anyway, alright. You all don't need them. Just fall through the front. Okay, that was, that was man. Uh, military, nine point one. Tell them pro. And Butler? Boy, we're with the nine point two, boy, counting the... Mr. Ford, we, we good, we ready.
There's a lot of mute phone.
Nine point two, board, uh, calendar, has, miss, uh, anything a board member needs to add or take away, give them.
When is the last day of school, is it tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
Okay. Let me get the course out.
And, nine point three, you.
Nine point three, I'd like to want to be, uh, extremely grateful, share my screen. It has been a busy, busy week. Busy week, uh, just some, uh, uh, ideas of the activities that we had in our district, um, within, since our last meeting. Project Leathaway is a, um, um, program that Natchez Middle School students participate in. Um, uh, if you remember, uh, last year, we had a group of students who rode in the hot air balloons because they have aeronautic, uh, aeronautics, um, unit. Well, this year, they are in a medical detective's unit. The program is called Project Leathaway. And so what you have here are students dissecting sheep brains, so.
Dissecting what?
Sheep brains.
Oh, sheep S A G.
Yes, sir.
Brain?
Yes, sir.
Hmm, it's a little.
So if you sit to the left, um, that's what you see there, yes, at the middle school. So, yeah, they're, they, they are functioning as medical detectives there at, um, the middle school. Uh, next we had the seasons, uh, the season of Christmas. Now, let's, let me tell you, board members, we've had Christmas programs for the fourth year. But this year's program was absolutely amazing. Uh, to see, uh, students through, uh, kindergarten through high school, present their, uh, musical selections, um, and that picture to the left, we have a student conductor. That picture to the far right, and I'll try to increase it. Uh, the strings program, I had no idea that Mr. Ford, my class Ford, who's our string conductor and teacher, I did not realize how he has grown that strings program. And so we had more than, I think about fifteen students who, uh, present for us on, uh, that evening, and they were absolutely wonderful. Violin, cello, we all, it was amazing.
And do we have enough of those instruments?
Everyone had one, and I think, uh, the last, uh, earlier, earlier this year, we worked with Mr. Ford, the board, approved the purchase of his strings. Here, uh, that large picture there, that is a joint collaboration, so we had the band, uh, the Natchez High School, Natchez Middle School choirs, the strings, and our dancers all participated and collaborated on one musical selection, so that is Mr. Travata Hill, who is conducting, uh, for that entire unit. Again, it was absolutely wonderful.
That the guy, Morgan?
Mr. Hill is at, um, high school. Morgan has Mr. Robinson. So Mr. Robinson, we had a little technical issue, uh, with their music, but they never stopped, the children never stopped, and that's, you know, awesome, because a lot of times when you get children thrown off, they can't figure out, they kept moving. We didn't, they didn't have music, but they never stopped their song. So, yes, it was a wonderful, wonderful evening, and as Mr. Fields is saying, uh, something, they are on to something special over there. Uh, and I know that it is the wish of the board that we continue to make sure that we create a space for them. You would have been very, very proud, uh, of what they exhibit.
Tony, I wonder, in Santa too, if we can plan to do this for the community. You know, let, rent, you know, city auditorium, do something that is focused to the community, to the parents and to the community, maybe get with the mayor, uh, talk about doing some things that give us some publicity for some of these kids to be recognized in the larger community.
Through this season, they have performed throughout, they were the string program, the choir they performed for the Christmas tree, uh, lighting, uh, the choir, of course, you were there, Dr. Bunch, they performed at the, uh, Friday forum. This particular event, uh, was very well attended at the Natchez, uh, gymnasium, and, um, it's so good that we have our own facility and the stage, uh, the lighting that, um, I guess was, was blinding us at, uh, the ribbon cutting, we get, the, the lenses have been put on them now, and it just added such a nice effect, um, to, you know, what was going on, so we are.
So, but, yeah, and I mean.
But we can definitely do.
But, you know, and I want things to happen at the school, I don't, I don't mean that, but, but, um, uh, also to work with the music festival, Tony.
Oh, definitely, yes.
I mean, there it is, and we could, you know, open it up, and they'd be really responsive to seeing the kids, you know, get some energy in that music festival, you know, young people.
Oh, I'm all for that, we could definitely make that.
All right, let's, let's.
Yes, ma'am, this will be able to right me.
I know, and, you know, especially the stringed instruments, you know, I think that's, that would be great, to have them come into part of the music festival.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what, what I was telling you, is, I went out to McDonald, and the guy, he has a room full of keyboards. Uh, the guy, so he was, he said he have, he have to teach them notes and things first, so it's like when a child get into something, to make them interested, take two or three years, make them say, hey, I wanna stay in this, and I wanna, next year, I, I'm, I'm learning notes and things this year, I'm learning how to sing this year, and next year, I learn to play a little bit, and then. So you keep them interested, you keep them in that class. But he has a lot of keyboards, and I was asking him what they old or what, and he was saying something, so I just told him he got to have a conversation with him. This McDonald, along with the music department, you come along, why you have, you're able to get all these things, uh, strings and this here and there for the music department or whatever, because if all the keyboards are outdated, then probably they're giving some more or something like that.
And we need a couple of brains, you know?
Yeah. They could bring in whatever, because a lot of kids, they.
They want to be, uh, in the face.
But they need a good place to do it, too.
Right.
Uh, here we have, uh, students at Natchez Early College who participated in, uh, their first poetry out loud, uh, contest, uh, where they presented their own portrait pieces, uh, Miss Kennedy never been won first, uh, place. Kennedy is in the third, in the center of the first, the top left picture. Uh, Kennedy will participate in the regional portrait out loud contest, January twenty twenty four. Uh, we had, uh, second place winner, Miss Trish Bell, third place winner, Richard Felton, and Anaya White. Um, this, uh, uh, competition was presented by, uh, Dr. Erica Tamara Brown, Eric Brown Tam, and Mrs. Morgan Rueher Hogan. Dr. Morrison, Mr. Fields, and I had the wonderful opportunity to start our, was it last Friday? To start our Friday morning off with senior students at Natchez High School who participated in the real world, bad life, uh, experience. So each student was given a career, students were given an annual salary, they were given family dat-, uh, uh, demographics, and they had to navigate, uh, their budgets with real world experiences. Uh, when I got there, I think it started at eight thirty, when I got there, uh, Ms. Natchez High School, Ms. Tashia, Tashia Richardson, she was already upset because she was a single mom of two children, she was a waitress making about twenty thousand dollars. Twenty six thousand dollars a year, and by the time I got there, about eight forty-five, she realized she didn't have enough money. She had sent the children to the grandparents, she was there, her student mom, she was really depressed, she was not happy. But to see those students really engaged, and we had community partners, Ms. Bell was there as one of the community partners, who were there functioning in the roles of bankers, uh, student loan officers, uh, they were talking about living expenses, childcare, and so forth. Ms. Kristen Hawkins was the, uh, what was her role? Basically, she was the unexpected situation, so we had people who, uh, uh, couple, couples who started off with no children, and, you know, boom, we had children, and they had to adjust their budgets to address that. We had children who decided that, hey, I don't have enough money, I, I don't have enough money in my budget, but if we get married, we might be able to figure this thing out, we had children who say, my, one young lady, her, her demographics, her husband was unemployed. And so she realized, she said, the, the policy is if he doesn't work, he doesn't eat. Somebody said, look, it's a big issue for you to get a divorce, where her job was paralegal, she said, child, I'm working at the office, so I, I will get free papers to avoid him. So it was an awesome experience for them to realize that when you become an adult, you have to work within your budget and make them think about career options, because you gotta earn, you know, if you have these goals to have this certain lifestyle, you have to have a job that's gonna support those life, that lifestyle. So we, uh, this was presented by Angela James, who is the career coach at the Natchez High School. And so we are going to, in the spring, in the second semester, we're going to open it up again for more seniors to participate. We also wanna go to Natchez Early College, because we know that this is a valuable experience for our students, as we told them, and many of the, the adults there told them, we were, or many of us were not afforded that experience or given that knowledge about money and financial literacy and so forth, as, um, as, as young people. And so we had to find our way through that process, and so, yeah, it was extremely, extremely enjoyable moment, and I know that they learned a lot. And my fact, my little thing.
You think I could join in there?
Come on, you, you. I wish I would tell them about us, but, yes. Uh, so as Mr. West has already alluded to, tomorrow is our final working day for twenty twenty three. We will, uh, uh, enjoy our families and friends and get some rest needed rest through Janu-, until January fifth, when employees will return and students will return on January eighth.
So.
It's all mine.
This thing, you, I, I, I heard about it, but I, I didn't run out to the night, but folks, I wouldn't even make.
So the next one, we'll make certain that you're aware, because this is, you would be.
So we tell you about student loan, everything?
We, we, we talked about, about, uh, they showed them how you have different, uh, levels of paying back your money, and some children were trying to avoid, I don't pay my student loan, because I don't have money in my budget to attend to that all.
Ms. James didn't pay her student loan.
This, this James did.
Uh, Mama was paying the student loans, and when we got married, I got some mail in Georgia, and I opened it up, it was addressed to me, from Inrela with it, and I opened it up, I said, what is this? She said, well, that's a, yeah, coupon, then, you tell the coupon, I'm sending fifty or sixty dollars. And I called back to Missy, but I say, what did this, uh, hand, hand? She said, oh, she said, I just letting you know, she said, I was paying Angela, uh, loan, she said, but now that you're married, they belong to you, and she sent all them coupons up to me, and I had been paying her loan, so she had no problem paying her loan. The rest of them might be, they're helping board. Uh, Miss Butler?
Sure, again, Mr. James, members of the board, uh, Superintendent McDonald Green and, uh, executive directors. For your, uh, perusal is the ESR three overview from, uh, federal programs, and, and this is ESR ARP, known as ESR three. Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Rob?
Happy holidays and everybody stay safe.
Mr. Wes?
Same thing, happy, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and happy holidays to everyone.
All right.
Just, uh, really, really proud of the kind of job that people have been doing, I mean, we can see from the activities that we have, um, you know, uh, superintendent is doing the great job, and I think we should continue to congratulate her and our staff here at Brayden for, uh, all of these, these extracurricular activities that I think are involving the students more and more with the community. So, thank you. I just wanna thank everybody for coming. I'm trying to be like, uh, Simmons on, nevermind, but anyway, thank y'all for coming.
That's right.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Y'all really know it's gonna be a beautiful Christmas. No rain is in the forecast, just nice warm, nice warm weather, it's raining, cool, is it?
Oh, okay. On your end.
So be careful, and thanks, I feel the partner, I love you, thank y'all.
I would like to say thank you all, have a Merry Christmas, and always try to be better next year than we are this year. Treat each other right, thank you. Okay, who else? Bruce, do we have anything, Bruce, you have anything for, take this here?
So, I, I would like to say one thing before we close out, I, I just wanna thank our, uh, President for all four of us for coming down.
Yeah, he be.
Uh, with us, and, uh, all four of us doing great things as well, so thank you for coming today.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, and I wanna, I wanna offer a special, uh, Merry Christmas to Sabrina and her new one. Let's give her a hand, she's two of them.
All right.
Our promotion, we are done.
Second.
Moving seven all in favor. Meeting is adjourned.